Meeting started tonight. If I could ask everyone to stand, Mr. Myers is going to need a second.
Good Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for the many blessings you've given us. Thank you for allowing us to speak here, just watch over this meeting, and thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for down on the crosshorses and amen.
Thank you. And let's remember to show that we just barely have more. And Congressman Parker is going to lead some pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is at this time of our monthly meeting that we are always pleased to welcome visitors and receive public comment. We're glad that you're all here this evening and appreciate that you've taken the time to be here. And we, I believe we have Mr. Moskata tonight as a guest. And it's at this time that we have received public comment. If there's any public comment that you'd like to make, it's...
No, I'm in the council with Earth and I'm Sharon Martin.
Welcome.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. Everybody else is here. So we're gonna go ahead and if there is no public comment, we're gonna go ahead and get started. And the first thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes of council meeting of January the 9th of this year, and I bring that everyone has reviewed those minutes. And I'll make a motion that we approve them.
I'll second.
And we have a second. It's a reading discussion. If not, all those in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is to receive the 2010 and 2011 audit report from Randall Field. And Mr. Field, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you and let you make some comments, and then we'll talk about your report.
All right. Appreciate it. I think all of you should have a copy of the report. Let's turn over a little bit of the table of contents. We'll look at the information that's contained in the audit. Under the financial section, first thing we have is the audit report. We'll briefly go through that tonight. Next, you have your discussion, management discussion and analysis required supplemental information that's there by your staff. We use, we need to prove this information, convert it to the basic financial statements to make sure that it is accurate as far as the information that's contained in it. The basic financial statements, we'll go through those tonight. I'll also have the notes to the financial statements, which will give you additional information about the financial statements themselves in the city, as far as preparing the financial statements. And the last thing we have is again, the required supplemental information. As we see, required supplemental information is required by general accepted accounting principles that's required to be in there. So we receive the budget comparison with the general and economic development. Both of those are considered to be major funds that we show them the budget right now on. So if we turn over to the my opinion, which is on page 10.
I'm sorry, I'm page?
Excuse me. Page one.
Thank you.
As we look at the first paragraph, you look at the bottom of there. It says, "The responsibility of the financial statements of the City of Newington. My responsibility is expressed with even on those financial statements." The second paragraph says that our audit is made in quarters from June accepted auditing standards, and those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain a reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material in the statement. The third paragraph is the opinion paragraph. It says that the following financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and changes in financial position and cash flow as of four-year year-end in September 30th, being the one for the general accepted accounting principles. Call that a clean opinion. Like I said, it's what you want for as the reports that we send in to the various departments that we do. The last paragraph makes reference to the required supplemental information that we talked about in the table of contents. Again, we, it's not a required part of the audit, but we do do comparisons and so forth to make sure that that information is accurate concerning the... Any questions? Over line, report back to your account.
I'd like to hear a clean opinion.
So if you'll turn over to page nine, let's look at the first financial statements that we have that we reviewed, I think all of you are familiar with. We have our government-wide statements that we talked about before, as where we combine all of the funds together. The first two statements that we do that, your government activities, we combine all your general fund, debt service, hotel motel, economic development, and our drug seizure funds that we have. We combine all of those, we add in your capital assets to those, and record depreciation. The business-type activities is your water and sewer fund. Again, it's recorded the same here as it is in the individual enterprise statements that we show. So as we look at those, again, as of September 30th, you'll see your cash, cash equipment, investments that we have, and then our receivables that were due at that time period, our due from other governments, capitalized bonds issued costs that we talked about last time, as far as our debt issue that we're having has been advertised for the life of the bond. Same thing with our discount on our issue of our cost of our indebtedness. In the water sewer, you can see the meter deposits that we have on hand at the end of the year. Your capital assets, as we mentioned, your land, building machinery, water and sewer system, our airport improvements list, our depreciation. We have some projects that's going on now with plenty of our community development that we have going on at the end of the year that we haven't finished, so therefore we're carrying those in construction and progress. Use your total assets under liabilities, you'll see the amounts that we owe at that time period, our accounts payable, accrued interest that we have on our indebtedness, and then our liabilities, the amounts that are due within one year and ones that the amount is due after the one-year period that we have. Use your total liabilities and your net assets. We have our investment and capital assets, net related debt, which is your capital assets, the debt that's connected to our fixed assets that we have. Under our restricted forward net assets, you'll see our balances that we have in our debt service fund, our drug seizure fund that we have, our economic development, and our hotel motel fund, and then the remaining portion is our own restricted assets that we have. Any questions that you might have concerning? Again, this information, basically, when we get to the fund statement, the way we maintain our books and records and just all remainder of the book, this information is maintained from third-party users that we have. So as we look at our second statement, our statement of activities, as you look across the top of the page, you'll see our programs, which is by each one of our departments that we have, and our expenses as we refer to. Again, we remove all capital expenditures, record depreciation, report interest in this particular fund. Our program revenues, those revenues which are specifically identified with each one of our departments that we have. And if you come all the way across the page, you'll see the far end in the column, you'll see the amounts there. The general revenue, as you can see at the bottom of the page, is not allocated to each one of our departments. We report that as separate, so basically as you go across the page, the figures that you see should be the cost to your taxpayers of each one of our different departments that we have, is what we're showing for the year. The water and sewer fund just shows again, the transactions that it goes through yet for the year that we have. Again, we have our active at the bottom, transfers and so forth. You'll see that we have an increase in our net assets in both of our fund types for this year, it's come back to our net assets. Any questions that you might have concerning this particular fund? If not, let's look at our page 12, let's look at our federal funds that go back to recording and the basis that we keep our books and records, that you see the reports that you view, the way we prepare our budgets that we have. You see our different fund types that we have across the top. You're familiar with, as I mentioned, all of the general and our economic development funds are considered to be major funds and broke out separate. The other funds that we talked about are all considered, all combined into our government fund types that we have, other government fund type. Under assets, you see the same classifications that we have in the other statement. The only difference being is property taxes, we don't realize property taxes in this particular statement. We actually collect them if they're not collected within the 60-day period, that it's required to be there and be shown as a liability at the end of the year. We have liabilities, I can correct those down, our video funds, of course, we'll do one-on-one funds together during the year. We mentioned the current revenue that we have for property tax. Our fund balances, we have a little different terminology this year concerning how we break the fund balance of denim, that's still gonna be the same type. As far as the amounts, the fund balance is a heading, which means we have a lien up that we won't be collecting probably in the next 12 months, so therefore that show is nonexpendable. Our restricted funds, we require to be restricted by law or by contract, and you see our debt service fund, economic development, hotel motel, and drug seizure, those are the fund balances that we have at the end of the year, and those are different funds. Our signed fund balance, we have the amount that we had in our capital projects funds now that we report under our general fund, we show it as assigned for capital expenditures and equipment, and assigned fund balance at the end of the year. Any questions though of this particular statement concerning the asset supply built into the fund? If not, the next exhibit that you have there is, it explains the information that I've heard you, the difference in the two statements, and reconciling them back together. So if we look at page 14, we look at the state of revenue expenditures and change in fund balance, it shows the 12-month operations for your city. Again, the same fund types across the top of the page that we have, the general fund, economic development, and other funds that we have. Breakdown in our revenues, I think you're familiar with those, as far as in some of the levels that we have, the forms of your budget sections that you have, and the amount of free loans. Our expenditure, again, if you look for you, just like we have in different departments that we have. Again, capital expenditures, it shows expenditures, just like investing, doing the same over our debt service. Our principal interest that we pay is showing the expenditure in the future for funds, and just like we asked for those. You can see the difference in our revenue and expenditures for the year. You can see our transfers in and out that we give from one fund to the other. We had to sell some assets or notes that we've already managed this year. We had capital leases that we had in the buyer's shop that we purchased in this particular year. You'll see the excess of revenue and other financial resources, whatever our spending is, and the findings of uses during the year. Our beginning fund balance comes back to our ending fund balance that we carry with our state. Any questions? The $25,000 that we show in the other federal funds that we have, is we showed that we used $7,000 worth of our drug seizure money this year. We had an increase in our debt service fund of about $90,000, about $23,000 in our hotel motel. Except the change. Any questions that you might have? Not, let's look at page 16, is our total net assets for our water and sewer fund. Current assets, you see our cash and cash equivalents, our receivables that we had. Our restricted assets, as we mentioned, all of those in the meter deposits that we have on hand. Our capital assets, again, the state of the cost, which accumulated depreciation comes back to total assets. Under our liabilities, accounts payable for expenses and the current portion of our debt. This would take care of all of that, it was retired in October that we had. And our capital partners and restricted assets. And back to our net assets, we mentioned all of the differences between capital assets and debt that's related to those, unrestricted. Questions about the balance? Not, let's look at the last statement that we'll go through in the afternoon, as we look at, look at page eight. Our statement of revenue, expecting the change in the fund, and our fund net assets at the year. You see our charges, the services, our missed lines, our total operating revenue, our expenditure related to our particular classifications that we have, again, reporting depreciation as a particular fund. You'll see the net income that we show for this 12-month period. Interest revenue and expense, interest expense, I kind of talked to our net income for the year, transfers and transferred. How did this particular fund to other funds, any changes in net assets? Questions that you might have? The remaining portion of your audit, I would encourage you to read through that, read in the notes, the cash flow statements, just to make sure we change the cash flow for the water and sewer fund. As I said, we appreciate all the help you've brought. We've studied, and we've looked at the rules of here, we ask for a lot of information, we're looking at different places. Nothing came for our team that we have any problems concerning the financial statements we're working on. Very good.
Thank you so very much. They made this down, we're making it easy. Not easy, but they've got a clean opinion on that, so.
It's a bad time to go through it. If you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, sir.
I'll open for a motion to accept this audit report.
So moved.
I have a motion in second to accept the audit report. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We thank you once again for your time and your preparation. The next thing on our agenda is to consider an engagement letter agreement with Randall Field for Austin Services for the periods ending September 30th of 2012, '13, and '14. And I'll make the motion that we enter into that letter agreement.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We look forward to seeing you next year. Appreciate it. All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is to consider a water bid for the wastewater treatment plant improvements. And David, I'm gonna let you review that adventure and the bids that we did.
The city received three bids for this project. Those bids range from $1,215,000 to $1,885,000. Allen Doggett Construction is a low bidder. And Allen has done work for us before. He put the sewer line in out west of town, and previously I worked with Allen on the sewer location. I'm really glad to see that Allen is a low bidder. I expected him to be a low bidder when he bid up. Allen just, he goes above and beyond when he does a job. The engineers certainly reviewed the bid, reviewed all the bid bonds, all the documents that are required, and found that he met all those requirements. So it's engineered recommendations, certainly staff recommendations that the council award this project to Allen Doggett Construction. Motion to do so.
I'll second.
David, we have a motion in a second to accept the bid from Allen Doggett Construction for the work on wastewater treatment plant. Also, you know, you and I talked a lot about Mr. Doggett and his work and stuff, and giving a great job, first of all, and I think he was a brilliant young politician, he did a great job, and appreciate some of the things that he did for the cities. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to consider resolution number R682-0212, which suspends March 13th of 2012 effective date of the Eppus Energy Corporation requesting rate change. We had entered into, what, the steering committee, and they have made that suggestion that we postpone that?
Yeah. It's got a standard procedure. That's gonna be an ask for a rate increase. We're a member, I think it's the 60-City, or 60-City Coalition, 60-City. And we will hire consultants to review the request of that rate increase, and then to make a decision with that and synergy. For that to happen, the council needs to approve this resolution, suspending that effective date for 90 days.
Sounds good. I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Not, all those in favor of that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to consider resolution number R683-0212, authorizing the submission of a home program application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And let you talk about that, David.
Now, this application will be for $435,000, be up to $435,000, both for direct costs and soft costs associated with the project. This will allow the city to complete five additional homes on the home program. That's demolition and reconstruction of those homes. The city's required match for this is $4,000. Should the council approve the resolution, which should get noticed soon, the state proceed with the project and start taking applications. Council, remember, we just finished the home program last month, actually, and awarded the keys to the, to the homeowner. That was for four homes.
It's a real benefit for the community, and a benefit for some of our citizens to be able to receive those homes in that home hall. Really, they're really nice, really excited homeowners, and they did a good job, and it's a really good thing for the community.
And thanks to our media representatives, because that was in the paper, it's on Facebook, and it makes a difference, because it lets everyone know, you know, what's happening. So I appreciate the media coverage.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution.
Second.
Do you have a second? Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is to receive the 2011 contact data report. Chief Rita, we're glad you're here tonight.
Thank you.
We trust that we've all reviewed that report, and any highlights in the report you'd like to go over with us?
It shows a total of 922 total contacts, if I recall correctly. I left the office in a little bit of hurry, and I've left my copy there. Oh, thank you. I spent time talking to Dr. Doug Harmon and going over the numbers that were contained here, and he has done periodic audits of our collections, the benefits that we utilize to collect the data, and he said that our data looked good, our numbers were good, and expressed no concerns or any hesitations on what we had compiled for you this year.
That's what we wanted to hear, it's what we text on.
If you have any questions, feel free to come in there. I'm always available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'm getting very last statement in this report. And we appreciate the fact that, I believe, I know you're in here also, that all officers have been through the training required for this, and it's very good. Glad that you're here.
Basically, as well as you.
You did. I appreciate you and your officers, who work hard to perfectly serve the community, and it's nice to know that everything works within the parameters that they should, and it's a good thing. We appreciate that, and we'd best them, best them all.
Thank you so much.
We need to accept that, that report?
Yes, we do.
Okay. If you want to go for a motion.
I'll make the motion to receive the contact data report for 2011.
I'll second. You have a motion in a second to receive that report, and is there any other question for discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Once again, Chief Rita. Next thing on our agenda is to consider a contract for election services with the Neoshe independent school. This is with, we do that each year during the year.
We've done it the last three years, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. It may have been longer than that, but I think three years. The contract that we entered into with the school district, and then the next item is the hospital district, whereby the city actually, we act as the elections administrator for their elections. It's a way that we feel like that we can serve the voters and the citizens. We do all of the early voting here at City Hall, so voters only come to one location for that, and then also on election day, they come to City Hall to vote for hospital district, the school district, and the city elections.
Makes a huge difference, and it does help some, want to encourage everybody to use that right to vote.
Yes, and we have met with the school board. They entered into the contract, and so it would be the pleasure of the council, we would ask that you enter into the contract for the school district.
I'll make the motion that we enter into contract with Neoshe independent school district.
And I'll second that motion. So we have a motion in a second to enter into that contract for the election services with Neoshe independent school district. Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing is to consider that same election contract with Neoshe area hospital district.
Yes, it's the same contract, and we have met with the hospital board, and I do choose to enter into the contract, so it would be our recommendation for council, it would be your pleasure to do the same thing.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we enter into that contract with the hospital district. I'll second. And we have a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Well, that's a really good thing for the community, where they can all come to one place instead of having to run all over to the community like they used to have to do then. I think that's a great thing.
Thank you for your work, getting all that together.
Appreciate you, everything you do. Next thing on our agenda is to order a city general election to be held May the 12th for the election of mayor. And I believe the period of file for a place on the ballot is already started, and it runs through March 5th. I'll make a motion that we order that election to be held on May 12th.
I'll second.
Do you have a second? Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to consider ordinance numbers 462-212, which orders a city special election to be held on that same day, May 12th, to take a role upon the division of a half-cent sales tax. David, I'm gonna let you explain that to me.
Okay, this, should the council choose to call for this special election, there will be a combined proposition put on the ballot. That proposition would be to reduce the economic development sales tax from one-half of 1% to one-fourth of 1%, and then to add an additional sales tax for street maintenance of one-fourth of 1%. This will not change the total tax rate, sales tax rate. It will just shift some of that hassle, that money collected for economic development to street and maintenance. I visited with the economic development board directors, and they are in agreement with me that certainly we believe that street repair and maintenance is an economic development benefit. This generates about $90,000 to use for street maintenance. This would be for...
This will be for a period of, of four years, and then it, should the council choose to renew it and have to go back to the voting. Should the, the, the combined proposition be voted down, then economic development will keep the half cent sales tax.
As, as they always say.
Yes.
Make a motion, we have pre-ordance oh four six two oh two one two.
Second.
We have a second, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to receive financial report for the month ending January third first of this year. Trust and tolls, and few minutes to review the reports. And I'll make a motion that we accept that monthly financial statement.
I'll second.
So a motion in second to accept that statement, if you have any questions, Congress. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next thing on our agenda is to receive report from youth advisory council. We're glad that y'all are all here today.
Well, thank you. Uh, we just had our trip to Garland here recently, and it went amazing. Uh, I would like to thank the community for all that they did to help, uh, sponsor us in paperwork, which made it fantastic, um, and all the memories that we'll have from it. Um, the, I'd like to say the, the order of events that happened whenever we've been there. First off, we had, we had a, a few icebreakers, a, a few games to, uh, it was cool because we had to guess, uh, the age of everyone, and we went in the circle, and, uh, we had to meet people that we never met before, and, uh, that kind of thing. And, uh, we had a get together in different rooms, and people would talk about what their city council does, or what their youth advisory council does. And, uh, what makes us different is, uh, that most schools do primarily community service, and they don't, uh, they don't do what we do, which makes it very interesting. Something that we did is, uh, the prompt that we used was The Voice, um, the TV show, and we would, uh, we would act things out and, uh, do stuff like that, and the main thing that we talked about was, uh, youth curfew in Milshe. And, um, it's interesting to see everybody's opinions, and, uh, believe it or not, most people have a strong opinion there. So, um, so we talked about the curfew and, uh, what it means to use your voice. Uh, then we had lunch, we heard an inspirational speaker talk about, uh, what our lives are going to do after college, and, and, uh, stuff like that. Uh, then we had a, uh, PSA announcement, which we're about to see now, and then, uh, then we had somebody very interesting talk about, uh, Facebook and how kids use it, but this is the PSA announcement that we used, um, which have to do with, uh, using our voice to talk about the community and animals.
Aw, she looks so hungry.
Yeah, I fed it last week.
Roper.
Aw, I don't think she's feeling well.
She'll get over it.
Hey, she doesn't have any dog tags.
Ah, we know who she is.
I think she needs some exercise.
Just let her run in the neighborhood.
It's time to go to the vet.
It's time for your checkup.
We bought you a beautiful new collar, so you don't get lost.
It's time for family time.
And that means you too.
Off to the groomers.
It's important to look good.
What kind of pet owner are you? Please be a responsible one.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, I wanted to, to tell everyone when they did their presentation, I mean, they did a phenomenal job. They learned to speak in front of audiences, to interact with an audience, to go back and forth, to control an audience, because it did get a little lively. But, um, I, I also want to thank the community for helping to, to fund this trip, and all of us learned a lot, and just getting to meet other people, and this group is very, very unique, and like Rover said, they are, they're learning city governments, and learning the roles of, of city government, and so I am very, very proud of each and every one of these council members and the work that they've done, and going to the summit means a lot to be able to do that, so thank all of you, and thank the community once again.
Okay. Uh, and by the way, I really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Your work of youth advisory council, all the time that it takes, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our admission of reports. Let you do that, David.
Thanks, Mayor. The, uh, elected officials conference will be February seventeenth through the nineteenth, and I think both mayor and the mayor pro tem have plans to attend that meeting, it'll be in San Antonio. I'm, I'm sure they'll be back to share their experience. We talked about the, the home program that we just completed, because those homeowners have received their homes, and things are going well there. The airport fuel farm is installed, there's fuel in it, we're waiting on the programmers to complete the programming necessary to make that work, hopefully, the next day or two, we'll have it up and going, so, kind of excited about that. April the twentieth, city, the city of Milshe will be hosting a TML Small Cities Problem Solving Clinic at Bata County Electric Co-op Building. That'll be from nine till two, I don't know if any of y'all attended any of those.
Great.
It's really good, TML staff, in fact, their executive director, Dan Salmon, is going to be here, Scott Houston, who's their, their general counsel, will be here, and they'll have Rachel Pitts will be here.
They're excited about coming to Milshe.
Yes.
I attended a regional officer training in Austin, and several of those officers had commented that they, they wanted to attend here, and I thought, this is where you need to come, is Milshe, so it's exciting.
There'll be a group of, of council members and, and officials from across the panel and side lanes, and be there, they'll, they'll have a presentation, but mostly they're there to answer any questions, address any issues you might have. It's, it's, uh, there would be a meal, you're willing to be registered to let Leanne know, we'll get you registered. And the TML quarterly meeting, it'll be on March the twenty-second, and it will be at?
Legacy. Legacy.
Legacy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can you let, uh?
Fourteenth Street.
Again, let Leanne know. Uh, one thing that, that I don't have listed on here is, uh, council had talked some time back about doing a planning session, I don't know if that's something you still want to look to do, and if there is, I'll give you some, uh, things where you can start thinking about what kind of things you want to talk about in a planning session. Be good, look at that and go forward with that. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Got it, thank you. Thank you. All right, anything? We have two?
Uh, just, uh, a little wish of speedy recovery.
Yes.
Again, want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day tomorrow, and hope both of you don't forget that, and appreciate all the hard work from the house and the staff. Mr. Mosketti, we're glad to share here tonight, I want you to come back at any time you'd like to.
I will.
Have any questions for us, or, or any comments?
Hot, real smooth meeting, I liked it.
Well, thank you. This is probably one of the longest meetings we've had so many years.
It's not long.
Usually, usually the commercial on TV is longer than the council, and, and we credit that to the staff and their hard work and the preparation that they do, but we'd like to have you anytime.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything? Not, uh, we are adjourned.